All right, we'll call the Monday, November 14th. City Mayor, City Council meeting to order. If we could please start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda tonight?
One addition to the agenda. I've got here, one thing I missed last week. It was a final pay application for the 2021 street project. And that's in the amount of $21,289.11. And then also the verified estimate quantities and closeout documents associated with that as well.
All right, you want to add that consent, or do you want that on a regular agenda item?
We'll do regular agenda item for that one.
All right. Okay, so I have that number 16?
Yes. And then there has also been raised a question whether or not the notification requirements for items 12 through 15 have been conducted in well and proper order. And as this was a little bit of a last minute bring up on this. My recommendation is going to be we table items 12 through 15 and pending review of that to ensure that all proper notification requirements have been met for the public hearings that happened.
All right. So with that, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of number 16, which is payout of the 2021 street projects and associated documentation and tabling numbers 12 through 15.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. That takes public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that's not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion second, I'm all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. That then will take us to number 10. Conduct public hearing on proposed assessments.
So each year the city has a number of people who are delinquent in their utility bills. And before we can go through the assessment process in that, we have to have a public hearing on the matter. And in order to have this public hearing, we sent out notifications to all the people, all the property owners on the list who are listed in the resolution on that. So first, we hold a public hearing to see if anybody wants to bring up any of their items before City Council regarding the delinquent utility bills that are to be assessed. And then if any changes are made, council gets to then have the final say on the matter. And then after that, we would look to approve the resolution before us. That would then send the delinquent assessment list to the county assessor's office to be appended to their taxes.
All right, with that, we will open the public hearing at 6:35. If there's anyone who would like to discuss this item, please come forward. And Nick, have we had any emails or anything that we have to put in as official documentation that has maybe come through?
Nope, I haven't received anything.
And did letters go out to all these, to all of them, correct? Did any have, has the number reduced since then?
We've had some partial.
Partial payments. The number, no, no, two.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anyone like to come up and speak? Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing and we will move to, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 2022-11-14-1, certifying unpaid delinquent utility bills and miscellaneous fees.
Motion.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion?
So these just go now, these will go to their property taxes and then once property taxes are paid in 2023?
Yes.
Then we get refunded?
Correct.
The money?
Yep.
Okay. So what if somebody comes to you like tomorrow?
So we submit these, but then they have until I believe it's the 30th of November in order to pay up.
Okay, and then anything that's the difference between what people have paid will be assessed for their 2023?
Right.
Okay.
So then after the 30th, if people haven't come in to pay up or make arrangements to pay up. So if they make a payment, a partial payment, or they make arrangements, then we'll update the list before sending it off to the county. But after it's been submitted to the county.
So somebody comes with you for like a payment plan, would you take that off the assessment? Or I'm just curious how, what our, what our plan is. Because there's some pretty, I mean, these are quite large. They feel larger than past years.
So as far as making payment arrangements, we generally work with them through the end of the year, but we can't carry?
Okay.
Any water usage?
Okay.
Over into?
So they pretty much have to say they have till the 30th?
Yeah.
And then they have to work with the county if they wanted to pay it off there and not have it?
Right.
Whatever they're doing.
Once it becomes certified, then it becomes part of their, it becomes a special assessment against the property taxes. Then they would have to pay it to the county at that point if they wanted to pay it early or they just comes due with their twice annual property taxes and they pay it as part of that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. To number 11, Nick, adoption of resolution canvassing the 2022 election.
So before we have the resolution canvassing the election, Mike was running unopposed. Derek was running unopposed. And then for the open council member seat, we had 89 write-in votes and then we had 23, 29, sorry. 89 write-in votes for Nikki, 29 for Peggy, and then Samantha had 13 there with. The other write-in of the 22 are just a bunch of one and two for various people that just all aggregate together on that.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 20-22-11-14-2.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. Congratulations, Nick and Nikki. So with that, then we can move to 12 through 15 have been tabled. We will move to number 16, the 2021 street project.
So for that, the 2021 final pay application is in the amount of $21,289.11. This will close out the project for final. And then, so we'd be looking for approval of this as well as approvals for the closing paperwork. Bolden Mink has reviewed the final pay applications for quantities and they've reviewed all the closing paperwork. And they are recommending we go ahead and approve this as everything is in order.
It said it was $21,289.11.
Correct.
That'll look for a motion to approve the final payment of $21,289.11 along with the closing paperwork.
I'll make that motion.
Which has been approved by Bolton Mink. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take council reports, council member Melander, anything to report on?
No, just they were mostly 12 through 15 from the planning commission.
Yeah, perfect. Council member Wagner, anything to report on?
No.
Council member McNeely.
Um, we had a personnel committee meeting. No, I don't. Apologize. We talked about, what did we talk about?
Fire department pay.
Fire department pay.
Fire department for on-call pay.
Yep.
Have some recommendations that will be coming to the council soon. So I don't think I mean to jump in.
No, well, I asked, I didn't know what we talked about.
That was my only, my other meeting too. We will have purse, Public Works Wednesday.
Yep, Wednesday morning.
So there'll be more of that coming. So with that, then I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion. You forgot Chad.
I'm sorry, Chad. I'm sorry, Chad.
Usually I don't have much, but we did have a park board meeting.
Thank you.
We did review some potential plans for the splash pad and prices and sizes. Wouldn't, I suppose we won't be bringing that to council.
Want to get some plans a little bit more solidified before we bring it out.
So, yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
Looking good.
Perfect, I apologize.
No, it's fine.
All right, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion a second, I'll look here, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We are adjourned. With that, we can jump right into the work session.
Budget.
We'll call the workshop to order. Write in Nick with your budget stuff.
Yep, so I just wanted to give an update on where we're at with the 2023 budget. I'll have this again in two weeks when we have our next council meeting and that workshop as well with a few more items. I just wanted to give you where I'm at in case there's some questions between now and then. My goal is to have, make sure we're all nodding heads and everything's looking good as we head into the December meeting so that we don't have to have any workshops. At that point, we just approve the resolution which adopts the levy and the budget and then we're off for 2023. So I'm not going to go over every single line item, but I'm just going to highlight areas where changes have been made. Then I want to note generally the changes in that. So very, so we started off with the general fund. The general fund is the 100 fund and now we're in the revenue codes. You can see that at the far left with the R. It will stand for revenue and then when it switches to E, that'll be for expenditures. And then we have our department and line item codes for each of those. So under the general property taxes, well, the three columns, we should say, the 2022 budget, the preliminary budget, which was adopted in September, and then the 23 over here is going to be the updated numbers that I've got.
Why is there, why is it so different?
Because the numbers weren't correct. I'll put it that. And as I get into it more, that I'm going to show.
I just never seen the 1.7.
This is what was plugged in. So this column here, I did not touch. I left as is and I created.
So that's, this is revenue? I'm sorry, I'm asking, this is revenue? So this was what we were anticipating for property? No, I'm good.
So this number here, why it's incorrect is because this includes general. So it includes, say, this number, but it also includes capital and debt in this number, which it shouldn't. It should only be your general fund operating in this.
Okay.
So it included two other numbers that it shouldn't have.
I mean, okay. I'm still confused, but I'm confused because it's wrong. It was wrong, so that's why I'm confused, right?
Yeah.
I can't, what's wrong with me?
So this is.
Just wrong, Nikki.
Just wrong.
So what does that number relate to? The 4765, what, that's general property taxes, what does that?
It refers to, so this is, this is explains it.
Okay.
So here's that 175, that's that number that got jammed in. It should have only been that number, but it wasn't.
Okay.
This is what the number should have been in there, but this number got jammed in. So it's the wrong number got jammed in.
Okay, got it. Okay, that makes sense, but we're still at the 53. It doesn't necessarily change what our tax rate.
No, because the levy determines what.
Correct, okay.
So this is what the total, so the total levy got shoved in there. It should have been all only this number, but this is the number that was levied. And that's why it's still this. It's just a cell error that got jammed in. It doesn't affect our.
It doesn't affect, it wasn't like we're going to be now at like 20%.
No, no, no.
Because that number was so wrong.
Nothing like that.
So it's just, they just put the wrong number in the wrong cell when looking at it at this level of detail.
Yes, that is correct. So that's then been adjusted with a new number here, which brings it in line. Other revenue codes that we looked at. So for 2022 budget, we had 90,000 in there. And then in the prelim budget, it was recommended to go to 40. And I concur with that. We're just not seeing building permit revenue where it has been in years past. And I'm not, my budgeting philosophy is I don't like to count chickens before they're hatched. I don't want to bet on revenue and hope it materializes because if it doesn't, then you've got revenue shortfalls. So I'd rather tie it to a year where we know it has happened. And if you get more building permits, hey, great. That's going to be extra revenue in the pocket, but I don't want to bet on it and fall short. Now you're dipping into reserves to.
And that's what happened last year.
This year.
In this year, 2022, because we did not have this.
Yeah, we budgeted 22, we're not going to touch that. We're not going to.
I like to ask questions to confirm the knowledge that I have in my brain.
Yeah, more, certainly do so. So we pin that at 40 in the, in the, in my updated budget because that reflects the 2022, what the actual is going to be. Similar when we go down to state grants and aids, it was at 35. We're not going to come close to that. Even 15 was a little high for my taste in looking at the expense or the revenues in those columns. I think 12 is going to be reflect something of what actually is going to come in. Because there was some one-time stuff that I think she looked at here that shouldn't have been included. Some, there were some COVID monies that came in that shouldn't have been included in that figure. Looking at purely what should come in, it should be more in that 10 grand. Now, if we get some grants along the way, again, it's, it's like some of this other stuff. If we get some more grants along the way that help pay for stuff, hey, great. But I only want to count the stuff that we're going to 100% get as part of that. LGA remained accurate. Charges for services, both of these and zoning and subdivision fees. We haven't come close to those and these are really variable depending on what actually comes in for revenues. It could be high one year, it could be low another, and I saw some vacillation in that. So when you, when I have vacillating revenues that go like this, it's really hard to pin a number on them because you have no idea what they're going to be. So rather than, again, depend on them, wipe them to zero, wipe them very low so that worst case scenario, you're not on anything, but if they have an uptick in them, so be it. But I don't want to depend on revenue I can't count on 100%.
We don't do a lot of zoning or have subdivision.
No, that's usually when things get platted and things of that nature.
Is this, I feel like this, is this what we, is this like the same every, I feel like this is very, I, it explains it more like I understand this view.
I don't know what's been presented in the.
I know, but I don't, I feel like this is different and it's more easier for me to see and and it explains it a little, like I feel like I know what we're looking at. Okay, thank you, I just want to, I like this, this is what I'm trying to get to.
Well, I'm glad you like.
Am I having a stroke? I don't know.
No, I'm glad this is, I'm glad this is really readable. I mean, that's the whole point that I want to go through this. I want to make sure it's palatable and consumable on your, for you guys.
No, and this is what I like.
And I'm good with some of these items also, you know, getting down where they should be. We should have a pretty good idea what revenues are for building permits based on our last 15 years of data. But I know previous administrators didn't even like to put any of that revenue in there where some did. So I'm fine with the different philosophies. If we decide next year or you set up different, you don't want to have even account for any of those. I'm fine with that, it's all going to balance out there at the end somewhere, but.
The budget philosophy on revenues, I try to see where the dip has been, the lowest in like a three to five year average. And I'll go to that lowest dip. Because that tells me that's the worst it's been, rather than trying to hit for a high point, make revenue.
What you did with the snow removal? Why is snow removal coming out?
Well, that's the state reimbursed it.
That's the state reimbursing us?
Right.
I lowered it because that's on the low end of what we've received and.
Because that to me is another one of those, we have 15 years of data, we should be able to get pretty close on what that's going to be.
Sort of, you can predict what winter's going to be like any given year.
Yeah, but after 10 or 15 years.
Yeah, but, yeah, so, yeah.
Not taking one bad of it.
So it looks like he is probably, are you taking the lowest snow, you're probably taking the lowest snow?
And that's the lower, and I'm okay doing that. If that's our philosophy is going to be going forward, then that's what we want. I'm, I'm good with that is what I'm saying.
Now, if I get two or three more years of this where I see more, it's more like four has been maybe, it's up around four, 4,200 and like it may be a four again, then I'll bump it up to four when I've got some trend data.
Have we looked at the, what we charge lately? Do we need to bring that to Public Works and have a conversation?
That's been adjusted.
It appropriately?
Yes. Kyle and I have gone ahead and made the adjustment.
Okay.
We are, we're, we were a little low, we're more in line with what surrounding cities put on their application to the state. We just went ahead and did that.
And notified the state.
Yep, so we get, we get a one-page application, we write our, we write our.
Every year we.
Don't things like that have to be on some sort of a fee schedule or, I mean, we just start changing things and hourly rates?
You see what other cities do because the state ultimately approves it, but you also want to be in the pack of what everybody else is charging because they have generally the same equipment.
We can talk more about that later. Okay, fair enough.
We were lagging, we were lagging a little bit behind on that, so we upped it a little bit.
It's good.
More in line.
Especially now with all the new equipment we purchased.
Right, yep.
Change some of that.
Well, this is on the lower end of what we've received, so I feel this is a safe number on the revenue side. Charitable gambling, this got bumped up by 1,500. Again, this was 5,000 was low for what we had been receiving over the last three years or so. It's, it's been, like I got the note here, has been above 6,500 for three years now, but 6,500 was around that low end. So I just pinned it at that, continue to have good years, we'll look at bumping that up some more on that front. I've included a new one in here because it wasn't being tracked before. So on our, we're in the 42, 200, our 42,200 code, which is under fire revenues. And this is our MBFTE training allotment, which hasn't been, I don't think, allocated in the past. So MBFTE assigns each, each fire department an allowance of money that you can claim for reimbursement for eligible training expenses. The MBFTE for mayor coming up in 2023 is $8,700 we can claim on that. So we turned in $8,700 worth of training invoices. They gave us $8,700 in reimbursement. So included that on there because I, I wasn't seeing it before. I, this year was only, we went after 600 bucks worth and we had a lot more allocated than that. So we're going to make sure we go after that in future years. That'll give you your total revenues on the change. That's why this looks so huge is the 1.7 is on there, but it's really, these two are probably the better comparisons on that. And then we're going to get into the expense side of things. Here's on general government. Went from 55 down to 40. We're going to be bringing those quarterly reports in-house for, and I'll be doing more of a monthly financial report rather than a huge quarterly one. On the quarterly, I'll give out the revenue and expense reports to everybody. So you can see, again, it'll look very line by line like this, so you can see the ins and outs on that. But then I'll have a, a monthly kind of overhead report on where cash and investments are at, things of that nature. Major changes that have happened in any of the funds for that month based upon expenses and revenues. So looking to less quarterly reports and those are 2,000 a quarter. And then we're bringing, anticipating bringing more things in-house, looking to reduce that even further. This could go even lower throughout the year, but I just didn't want to go too low on the expense side. Again, my budgeting philosophy on the expense side is shoot a little high. That way, if things come in under, you're sitting good, but if worse comes to worse, you're still okay. Engineering fees, I'm just anticipating using less engineering than has been done in the past. Just because there's some of that work that I'm capable of doing. So I don't need to go necessarily go to Dave Martini for absolutely every little thing. I've got some infrastructure experience and I can streamline some of that, so hopefully making better use of his time by not having him on every single little thing. Same thing for legal fees. I don't anticipate using Tim Sullivan a whole lot, other than sending him council packets and every once in a while reviewing a document here and there. When it comes to resolutions, ordinances, contracts, things like that, I've reviewed a bunch. And maybe I'll give him a quick glance at a contract or two, but I don't need to be going to him for every little thing because I've dealt with quite a bit, so I'm expecting that to drop by quite a bit. Adjusted the telephone usage for 2022 actual, it just wasn't in line with what the expenses have been. So it just needed to be adjusted up. Postage adjusting down for actual usage, it just, it was over budgeted at 1,500 and the expenses don't show or justify having it at 1,500 based upon look backs. You're going to see a lot of that, it's adjusted for actual. Same thing with printing and binding, it was a little on the low side, so bumping that up, adjusting for actual. For all of these codes, these 360 codes that you see here, the insurance general, what this is, is this, this is the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. This is our work comp and our property casualty. And that, that's where those are coded to. I'm not sure how they were coded in the past, but I've been doing it a certain way for 12 years. And I have a spreadsheet with, I use that, splits them out depending on where those expenses are allocated. So on the work comp end, they give us a invoice and it tells us exactly where things are coming from on the work comp and as far as funds go. And then on the property casualty, it lists all of our locations that are insured, lists all of our vehicles that insured. Then there's a couple other breakdowns. And then I pair all those vehicles and those properties with their appropriate locations, whether it's the water treatment plant would go into water or the wastewater treatment plant would be paid for by sewer. And then street buildings get appropriately, city hall, things of that nature get split out appropriately. So I have a very detailed spreadsheet I use to allocate those costs.
Split out into different buckets.
Yep.
The numbers.
The number is the same, I'm real allocating the buckets.
Perfect.
So they're more accurate in my estimation. So you'll see those numbers change quite a bit, but the end number is about the same, yeah. Yep. Then scrolling down, not a whole lot of other changes there. Little bit increase, well, the decrease in professional services, looking at what had been taken on the past, those professional services, I'm not going to use. And then also increase in travel expenses for conferences and things that I'll anticipate going on in the future there. For boards and commissions, there's no usage in here. Planning commission used to come out of here, but now it comes out of planning commission and that department code and EDA used to come out of here, but that's going to come out of EDA now that they're levying for monies, so they can go ahead and take care of their own expenses out of there. But other than that, park actually used to come out of here back in 17, I think it was, but then that got moved out of the, out of the parks fund or moved to the parks department code. So there's really been very little activity in here, no usage. So I just zeroed it out because there's no sense budgeting for it because it's covered in all other places.
So instances like that, what happens with those line items? Do we just leave them in there or do we take them out eventually?
Eventually, we'll take them out. Eventually, on a grander scale, I do want to revamp the chart of accounts a bit. We'll use the state one that they have, but I think fire is a really good example when we get to it. There are multiple sections for fire that I think we can, rather than having three or four different departments within fire, we can get that all into one and have it, you'll get the same information, but it's concise rather than sprawling across multiple accounts. So I think there's a lot of that condensing we can do. Under the city clerk deputy, I just highlighted the bottom totals on that rather than highlighting multiples. So for this, I've also budgeted in for a third person with some preliminary figures that I've gotten a different spreadsheet that helped populate that. So I've adjusted numbers for a third person and this is third person for the entire year, even though that realistically isn't going to happen, but I want to make sure we've got full. even though that realistically isn't gonna happen, but I wanna make sure we've got full numbers in on expenses, rather than say, well, maybe we'll do six months, but if we hire them three months in, now you're not budgeting correctly. So I go for those full cost scenarios on these things, to make sure everything balances out. And if we have to adjust from there, then we can, but everything's balancing out, which is nice to see.
When you say third person, you mean Janelle is one, you're two, and this planned is three?
Yep.
Okay.
And, uh, we can just skip right, we can take a look at that. I'll segue right into that, since we jumped on the topic, so. To get an idea of where we're at with staffing, I contacted eighteen other cities, and I pulled their, I, I quizzed them about their staffing structures to make sure things were as apples-to-apples as possible. I wanted to make sure they didn't have extraneous departments, which may have been adding staff, that we didn't necessarily would cover. A DMV is a great example, or deputy registrar, that will inflate office staff numbers. Uh, but it's a department that a lot of cities don't have, so I wanted to make sure as things were as apples-to-apples as possible. So I got that list of them, and then, uh, to try to do it as comparatively as possible, took their populations and then divided by the number of office staff they have, and then you get a population per office staff ratio, that then becomes your way of saying, okay, what, how do we compare against other cities in an easy-to-read format? And then when you do that, uh, so you have mayor, this is where we're currently at with two people. And then you have mayor at three, this is where we would be at with three people. And then the average is the green bar, or it's actually the median that I use, rather than average. So we're up here on the high side, as far as population to staff ratio for in the office. At three would still be above average, and going to three, I would say we would be able to hold that till at least thirty-five hundred population before we'd have to re-take, uh, see how things are going, and then evaluate. Not, not necessarily add, but evaluate that at that point, once again. And it could be higher than that before, we need to add another person at that point.
And what's your vision for this person, as far as roles and responsibilities, is it gonna be a city clerk role, is it?
It'll be a more of a finance person position, so, uh, you'll take on true city clerk duties, and then there will be some crossover. So there will be primary areas of focus for both, and then the secondary areas of focus will also function on, um, some redundancy, cross-training redundancy, as well as cross-checking work, having multiple eyes on things, so that, uh, you can catch, if there are errors that made, that are made, you have another set of eyes looking at it, because we're all human and mistakes get made. But then we have a second set cross-referencing things, you can hopefully catch those things earlier on.
That's one thing we always get caught in the auditing, is we don't have enough checks and balances.
Yep, yep.
Internal checks and balances.
Yep, and this will go towards that internal checks and balances that the auditor's staying us on.
But that person kind of taking some of that, finding that's where you're expecting some of this stuff coming back in-house now.
Yes, so. Yep, so that's where you're bringing in more from ABDO relying, well, with the third person, we won't rely on their services at all, outside of an audit. And their audits, I think about thirty grand for the city at a base level, if I remember right. So even though I've got forty in there, you know, truly, when it's all said and done, you're bringing that back down to just the base audit level.
Good.
And then when we look at Public Works, kind of the same type of setup with that. Mayor is over here, again, once again, uh, with us currently, and then mayor at three here. This is where we'll be at with the third person in Public Works, and then the average, again, is in the green for that. So this becomes that data that we look upon to ask the question, well, are we justified looking at three people? Or, or, you know, we're way on the underside if we get a third person, and the answer is even with three, we're still above average. But when we're looking at a splash pad and other things like that, this could require some more work. We're still above average with three people on both.
That just shows that we might, would need maybe a fourth person sooner than we would need another staff, internal staff person. Especially if we add like a splash pad and.
As I was gonna say, we're still on the high end.
Yeah, more and more stuff we're adding with, with the batting cages and the volleyball courts and all stuff, it's taking more of this maintenance.
And I will have bathrooms.
Good, are you look, kind of a vision, uh, kind of an entry level?
So.
Position for Public Works?
So for the Public Works, what it would be is Kyle would still function as a supervisor, and then it would be a position almost the exact same as what Brian has. So you just have two of those Public Works workers. And then the goal is to have, um, everybody cross-trained, so everybody's got their water wastewater licensures. If they need to get CPO for the splash pad, for whatever reason, they can go ahead and get that. But making sure everybody has those, so that people can fill in for each other as well, as needed. So that was the analysis on the staffing end of things. So that's where you see that third person, uh, budgeting in those numbers, making sure we've got those in line. Planning and zoning.
I thought we had a third office person in the budget for twenty-twenty-three. Is it, was it on a different line?
Yeah, I was probably on a different line, but we did.
Didn't we have?
In our preliminary, we did.
Yeah.
Factored in for.
Yeah, your preliminary you did, it just wasn't allocated properly.
Okay, so again, there's a, some other line that's offset.
Yeah, it was in, um, uh, it was in, um, community center. She jammed the eighty grand in the community center.
Okay.
For that.
That's fine, it just, it's a big difference, and I was like, I thought we had planned for that.
We did on our preliminary, yes.
So the, then there were splits based upon, so all the employees get split, except for me, actually, but I'll look at that in the future. But all the employees are split either into the general water sewer funds. So Janelle's position, for example, she's a third, a third, and a third, into, uh, administration, water, and sewer. Uh, Kyle and Brian, for example, they are twenty-five percent in street, twenty-five percent in parks, twenty-five percent in water, and twenty-five percent sewer. So having found that out, then I, that's why we get alterations in here, because that wasn't done in the preliminary budget. They weren't cost split out exactly as they needed to be. So I've updated all that to make sure they're cost split out according to where they'll be actually, in the whole thing. I don't know, I, you know, nothing against Lynn, but I don't know if she knew that, exactly how the cost splits were going out when she was putting together the preliminary budget. I know that she said, yeah.
It was more of a timing.
Yeah.
She was aware, just more time, make sure the money's in there.
Yep.
Our biggest thing, and then we're kind of, well, once you get on board, you can take, take a deeper dive into it, but.
Yeah, so it's, uh.
She was aware of it.
So it's, I think it's similar to what we saw with the insurances, the money was in there, it's now just broken out where it needs to be. Then we get into planning and zoning, where we've adjusted, uh, the other pay-for-boards and commissions, which, there just hasn't been a lot of planning commission meetings over the last couple of years, there just hasn't been a ton of planning commission activity. So that's been adjusted down, because there just isn't that board activity that's been happening. And then same with professional services, because there hasn't been a ton of planning commission, there hasn't been a ton, uh, on this is, okay, this is John Anderson or city planners, this is where his service fees come out of. There just hasn't been as much as has been in years past, so that's been adjusted down as well, to get to actuals. On the computer side of things, uh, this hasn't been used, and then the expenses, I did see that were out of it, would actually go into repairs and maintenance. So, uh, there's really no use for the capital outlay for computers, I don't see a point to it. Uh, that's why I got a little bit extra in there, uh, five hundred more in the repairs and maintenance side of things, but I'm not seeing anything.
Well, I'm wondering if it was for when we bought new.
It could have been.
Things, and then it just never has come off.
Over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we should probably get those on some sort of rotating schedule, trying to decide how often we feel we should be changing these out to keep up on the right software updates or life batteries, and these gotta be at least four years old, aren't they? No, maybe not that much.
Maybe two.
But.
I'm not predicting anything for twenty.
I'm, I, yeah, I don't think we need to, but let's kind of keep that as an earmark.
Mm-hmm. I did jam a pretty big, so this eighty grand is where the third person was at. Um, so that got dispersed, and I've got a hundred and fifty here, I've got a soft list of things that, to my knowledge, is taking place in twenty-twenty-three. We're replacing the rooftop units on top of here, because apparently those need to get replaced, and those have been bid out, or quoted out, and those are getting, and we do that.
Yeah.
We haven't paid for them yet.
Oh, that's right, didn't we approve them? We just approved them to do them, and we'll be paying for them for into next year.
Yeah, that's, that's what.
We wanted to get them at that price.
Yep.
Yeah, and they take a while to get them.
I think those alone were fifty-five, sixty.
Yes, we've already approved doing it.
Yep, so we've got those in there. We'd like to do the ceiling tiles here in the hallway, and then in the kitchen, and then in the, um, the stage area in the community center. If you haven't looked up before, it's pretty ugly, and, uh, I don't think we want our community center giving off that. One thing I'm also. One thing I'm also doing is I'm having, um, CenterPoint and Excel Energy conduct an energy audit on our building. It costs five hundred dollars, and they will come in and look at all of our systems, they will look at our lighting, they will look at our HVAC, uh, anything related to electric and natural gas, and they will tell us where, if any, we can make energy efficiency upgrades. Prime example, switching from the ballast we've got here with compact, compact fluorescents to LEDs. They'll find us the rebate programs that they have internally through Excel and CenterPoint. They'll tell us how much they'll get back in rebates, and then they'll also tell us what the return on investment is for the energy savings that's expected from it.
Um, we do, I'm curious, I just thought of this, because you're talking about this, we do have a solar panel, solar, a subscription. It would be nice to see what that looks like now, because, you know, over, over time, like, because they give us a credit.
Yes, I saw we had an agreement on that, and I haven't had time to really.
No, I don't, I just, if you wanna just make a note, that just reminded me, because it was, you know, over time, like, it starts to pay for itself, because we have a subscription to a local solar panel.
Yep.
And then what that gives off, we get a credit, we pay the subscription, but then we get a credit on the account.
Yeah, we were just.
Yeah, and companies are kind of being sold, bought out, sold, bought out, sold, so we're having to do a little bit of backtracking to figure out who do we really contact for this information?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tracking that down, good, got a list there.
Sorry, I was just, I, I was trying to throw that, I just never thought of it until now.
No, that's, that's perfectly fine. Looking at the ceiling tiles, replacing those, that would be tied to the LED conversion, if that comes back favorable. Um, switching out everything, and then you do the ceiling tiles at the same time with that. Uh, we'd like to look at getting just for the office space, that's tied here, not necessarily the entire, um, building. Humidification in the winter, and then dehumidification in the summer. On those fronts, it gets, I can already tell it's dry in here, in the office, and I've been told it gets awfully damp in the summers, with a lot of paper hanging around, not the best thing. I like to replumb the hot water, uh, could certainly take a look afterwards, but our hot water heater is located, we have the storage uh, area that's in the front of the building, in the, if you go in that door, in the back, down onto the recess, the crawl space area, the water heater's down there. And the kitchen does not get hot water because of it, there's just, takes too long for the hot water to get up and over. So I would like to eliminate the hot water heater that we have, the tank system, and I would like to see about replumbing an on-demand system that would heat water up as it's needed, rather than having a tank full of water that rarely gets used. I think that will be better for energy efficiency, and then replumbing it closer to where the, where the hot water is actually getting used, rather than traveling across the entire building to get there. And then as we do do the LED conversion, um, I know each, each of the overhead large lamps in the community center, each one of those is tied to a circuit, and a breaker within the breaker box, it would be great to upgrade all the electrical at that time. Also, look at the electrical that's in the storage room as well, because that's a pretty old panel that's in there too, just by looking at it. Be just nice to give it to once over, and while we're upgrading LEDs, see if we can't clean that up quite a bit, and get that in better shape. And then also take a look at perhaps, uh, getting a new council desk, one that will host everybody that, nine seats rather than just five. And, uh, that would be, for council desks, you'd do something that's a custom carpenter job, that would fit this room appropriately. Not to say this doesn't, this certainly works, but we'd have something designed, a little bit more space for council members, and then, uh, seating for staff and consultants that come as well. So that's the thought process on that list of items in there. Police contract got updated to the twenty-twenty-three contracted amount.
List, could you kind of go throwing more of a, if it was to break down into a two-year, you know, what would, what were priorities?
Yeah, I don't, I just haven't had a chance to throw quote numbers with any of these.
Hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I was wondering, does it all have to happen right now?
For one year, but.
It doesn't, it doesn't, this is just kind of.
Still think we should continue on and, and improve the building, we're already investing a lot into it, so I, I, I'm not disputing any of that, but I'd like to see kind of a priority list and.
Yeah, I will readily admit, this is, this is a knee-jerk number, you know, I just haven't had time to go out and figure a lot of this out.
Okay.
Well, considering, I mean, eighty to one fifty is almost double, and then you gotta take out the salary of an office employee, so it's more than double.
Yeah, this is knee-jerk, this is complete knee-jerk, if you ask, I know it's fifty-five to sixty for the rooftop units, but that's about it. I gotta refine this number, for sure.
All right, fair enough, thank you.
But I just wanted to, I wanted to have a placeholder in there, and I wanted to make sure it's high, because it, if we come down from it, hey, great, that's expenses, that's reduced. But I didn't wanna start low, and then have to come back and say, oh, we gotta jack it up several thousand dollars with that budget philosophy. So there you have the police services contract that was approved, so that's the final number, that'll go in there, adjusting that. Uh, when it comes to the fire protection, it was fifty grand, that's been budgeted in years past. It just, it just hasn't hit there, uh, year over year, it's been more than thirty-six.
Hey, but you have to know that we did make an adjustment.
Yep, fifteen dollars per meeting.
Right, so I know that was what, like, eighteen hundred, I don't remember how much it was. If every, that's once a month, so twelve, we did like what the max is, because not everybody goes to every.
Yeah, maybe twenty-five.
Okay, so that's accounted for in that number?
Yeah, because in years past, it's been more of thirty-six. So the actual's more along, the actual without, because we haven't done it yet, for twenty-one and twenty, it's been about thirty-six, is what's been actually spent in these wages, now you add in a, a few grand extra for the meetings. So you're still getting up around that, more of that forty, and then if you take it, take it from the existing wage to what the proposed is for firefighters.
And it also includes, it hasn't been approved, but if it, if it did get approved, that adjusts for that?
Yep, so I'm still making sure we have enough in there for all those. And even with all those, I.
Think you're high.
It's not gonna be fifty, it's not even close to fifty.
Okay.
Forty-four, I think is gonna be more on the money with that.
Back, back up, up a little bit on the police contract. I, I know it's a small amount, but we, we must have some revenues coming back from that, from what we're contracting out.
So what we get from township, oh.
That was on the top, I think.
Was there?
In the revenue.
I'm sure it's a small amount, when it got capped, did that get captured, or?
That hasn't been settled yet, actually, Hollywood Township hasn't, gave the for sure thumbs up on it. Because I've been in contact with Pam from Hollywood Township, and they say, yeah, they were interested, but they haven't solidified.
But we should, okay, so we're not even gonna worry about counting it for now, it's, it's a small amount.
Right.
Okay, no, I'm okay with that.
My assumption is they're interested, but we don't have a contract in place for them to buy those two hours.
And last, I, I think she's reached out a few times, wondering where that is.
And I've been, I've been in touch with her.
Interested in it, but.
Yeah, we just.
We should probably get that moving for them.
The email I saw, Hollywood Township said that they were gonna be putting, putting together the contract.
They're putting it together.
That's the email I. That's the email I read. Now, it doesn't really matter who's ever going to put this contract together to get it going, to go forward and get this thing finalized, fine. But yeah, that's on the radar. Things I'm working with Pam on from Hollywood Township, but. So under the fire protection, we got that. Um, same with the withholdings. It was just budgeted too high on the withholdings. Uh, professional services. Uh, things like BCS checks and the fire hall cleaning have been coming out of here, but we didn't have anything budgeted for it. So I put that figure in here to cover that. And then again, we have, we've had the insurance adjustment with the league and that's just reallocation there. Oh, then getting back to, we have fire protection. This is where I talk about condensing some of these departments down. You have fire protection. And you have WAFTA. I don't know what that stands for actually. And then you have fire equipment and then you have fire station and then you have fire department land and then you have fire department truck payment, fire relief association. A lot of this can get condensed down into one department and then you don't have to have all these extraneous departments allocating stuff. So that would be nice to do in the future, but for now, it's what we got and we'll use it.
Okay, so, but that won't screw up any of the percentages for the. Townships?
No. Nope, so you're, you're not eliminating expenses, you're simply condensing them into other codes. So the number stays the same as just your. Yep, yep, that, that will get preserved. Under fire equipment, uh, we, the repairs and maintenance cost was at fifteen thousand. That just, there was one high use way back in twenty and. And it's been lower since and before that. So there was one tick up and I've seen this before. You get one really higher than everybody. You want that jacked up to make sure that it's always covered in the future, but then. That big one-time cost never happens again and so you're just budgeting too much money. Sometimes you just get, you, sometimes you just get bad one-time years of expenses. And I always tell my councils, that's what your reserves are for. You always want to make sure you're budgeting stuff so that some years you're high, some years you're low, so, but over the average, you should be about on point. But once in a while you get a bad year and you don't want to knee-jerk your budgeting expenses because of that. You evaluate it, make sure it's actually a one-time and then if that truly is, then you don't adjust your budget. But if it becomes a newer type of expense and it has going to have tails on it, then you certainly want to make sure you include that. Because then you have to account for it going forward.
Where, where, we usually were budgeting ten thousand a year for new fire gear. Because it's pretty much a hundred thousand dollars every ten years, so we were doing. A hundred thousand because we were surprised by that number when we had to get new gear. We've realized they were all expired and we had to pay a hundred thousand out of the blue.
And so we have the capital.
Okay.
Capital levy here and then we get down to the capital levy here. I assume that's part of the hundred thousand dollars that we levy every year, so we're socking money away into the capital improvement fund.
I feel like it was a separate line item. Ten thousand, that's why, but if we didn't do it for twenty-two, twenty-two.
And that's something I'm going to be hitting, so.
Have to dig deeper. I think it's there. I think, I think it's there.
Remember seeing the ten.
Yeah. I thought it was for turn, I thought there was a turnout gear line item. I thought, or it was a PPE or.
It is in the CIP. I saw it in the CIP.
CIP is that?
I saw it in there and I'm going to be working on reconstructing that to make sure that. So I don't have access to ABDO's spreadsheets for how they all calculate what they have. So I'm reconstructing those and that's something that'll come in-house that they're doing now is the long-term CIP stuff. I can do that. So I'm building the spreadsheets, but that's, that's a twenty.
I mean, I just, I just want to make sure that that was this one thing that pops in my head that we know that there's going to be that expense. Every ten years.
Yes, so.
But I remember seeing the line item, but I don't know what it was in, you know, like.
We look at that. I just started creating this today. So there is your turnout gear. With the projected amount.
Yeah, so we were doing ten thousand every year after we bought the new one, just so that. That money was there when we needed it, knowing that that's every ten years.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that it's there and accounted in whatever number it is, but.
And when I get the CIP updated, that's exactly what you do is you see what you've got saying if it's twenty-twenty-eight, we got to make sure we're putting enough money away in these previous years. So that when you hit twenty-twenty-eight with an inflation factor.
Yeah.
That the money's sitting there in the fire fund.
It was just a really big expense. That one year and so then we decided to be more proactive, knowing that. That was an easy. Thing that we knew that we had to put away for.
And maybe that's what this number is, new equipment?
That'll be good, take deeper dives than this with personnel because you had ninety-eight thousand probably way low.
Yeah.
We spent well over a hundred thousand on the initial ones.
Yeah, and that, so that, those, that spreadsheet was yanking right from what ABDO had.
Yeah, I think that's just one thing, if you can keep that in mind on the fire department, is that the turnout gear. I think we bought it, what, twenty-twenty or? Yeah.
Doing twenty-twenty-eight.
Mm hmm. Yeah, we want to make sure that the money's in, in those funds so that when we go to purchase it.
We're halfway there, so now is not a bad time to readjust and see what would it cost today? And then throw in. An increase for inflation.
Yep. Those are the conversations I'll be having with my department heads on an annual basis when we go into budgeting, when we look at the CIP every year, making sure those things are in there. Making sure the cost, is it still a hundred thousand for SCBA gear? And.
That's the other thing.
And Andy goes, no, it's been going up. Okay, then we need to adjust to make sure that we have that going in there. We don't want to fall short, not at all. On the fire station end, um. Going from thirty-five hundred to five thousand, just adjusting for actual that we've been seeing expenses come out of there for repairs and maintenance costs.
What is that from the old station?
When did the new one come online?
Last year. Yeah.
Yeah, it would have been some of that then.
So some of that is going to be the old station.
Yeah.
Just stuff like that.
Yeah, no.
I don't think we'll have as many repairs and maintenance on the new station.
This is why I want to make sure we, like, give this guys to you now rather than.
Well, we don't expect you to know like the timelines of every single thing that we have done, so this is, this is a really good work session to go into this detail.
Mm hmm.
You're, I'm, I think it's great.
And then the truck debt service, it was being budgeted for, but uh, it shouldn't. It comes out, this is paid out of the debt service fund and it is part of. It is part of this number. So it's levied for, but the debt service amounts we levy for go into the debt service fund. It doesn't hit the general fund. So it shouldn't be in there. And that number is actually. It'll be. This one. That's the fire tanker one. But this one is replacing the twenty-one, that's this one right here. And that's in the debt service portion, so that's getting covered. It's just not appropriate to be in general fund.
Okay.
For building inspection, um, this is just adjusting for twenty-two, twenty-two actuals uh, with less building permits come in. As we saw the revenue come down on the revenue side for building permits, this is the adjusting factor on the expense side. And we get the highways and streets. This is adjusted for the third person and a lot of these got adjusted for the third person. And then insurance, again, that's been adjusted. As well, other than that, not a ton of changes, capital outlay.
Can you go up? But what? Oh, it was fifty-three. Okay.
Yeah, she had it split out weird.
Okay.
Not quite accurate. And then the capital outlay goes from eighty to twenty because all that scheduled to come out from next year is the tool cat and a replacement lawnmower. Twenty grand will cover that, including trade-in. So this is based upon with trade-in cost, not entire cost. For ice and snow removal, adjusted that to twelve. For salt and sand, I talked with Kyle about this, uh, these two items I talked with Kyle about. And we feel these will cover the cost of what he's looking to get. He penciled that out. And then um, for professional services, this is would be if there was a contracted hauler that came in with another singular dual-axle truck to help with hauling. Hasn't, there wasn't one last year that we had. Um, and we're not anticipating a lot of extra help on this at all. The guys have been handling it in-house, so we've been able to reduce that down. Storm drainage has been taken out entirely and moved to the storm fund. So the storm fund hasn't had a budget, so I created one for it, new for twenty-twenty-three. We're getting revenues from storm fees. And they've been going to the storms who were funded and their expenses coming out of the storm fund, but there hasn't been a budget for it. So I put together a budget for that to cover it. So that fifteen grand got moved to the storm fund. Street lighting, um. For twenty-twenty-two budget, it was thirty-five. Y got shoved up to forty in the prelim. I have no idea. Because it's going to, uh, street lighting costs are more of that thirty-two it's been landing at.
Even with the higher cost of electricity?
Yeah, this is tracking this year's costs and then adding some for next year.
I've been just assuming that everybody's electric bills have gone up, so.
Mm hmm.
I would assume that the city would be in the same.
For this one, I take a look at, since we're through, or we, we're into November. I look at the last ten months with electric bills in twenty-twenty-two and then I project them out for the remainder of the year. And that's where I got this figure from.
So you really dig deep when you're looking at these numbers?
Yeah, I, I can, I'll even. I should be able to connect from here. Oh, never mind. I don't have it on this desktop. Never.
That's fine. I. So you, yeah, I mean, the number isn't just a number thrown in. You're, a lot of these numbers you've done research on Y.
So what I do is I go into the Banyan data uh, software, which is our accounting software. I go in there, I pull up this line item code. I look at all the transactions that's been in it. I see what's been done each year. And then I extrapolate out those numbers. So I look at what's actually been going on within this line item. And that's my base budgeting philosophy. I like to do zero base budgeting, so each year I wipe the budget to zero. And then I rebuild each of the line item codes based upon what's actually needed, not versus. I don't do like a three percent adder on the line items. I don't believe in that stuff. Um, you build it back every year to make sure your revenues and expenses are what's needed for that particular year.
I think that, yeah.
I've seen budgets where they throw three percent year over year over year and it just gets out of hand. And you get numbers that don't even match reality.
Yeah, I like this philosophy. I, but it makes sense because you present it in a way that is easy to read. Understandable and you can see. And then you have, if there's questions, you have ways to show where you came with that number. Okay, this is, this is beautiful.
Personnel to help with this, we've always been short.
Yeah, so you have.
Able to do these deep dives, it's a lot harder.
For the maintenance building, uh, for repairs and maintenance, uh, just adjusting for actual on that. The five grand just hasn't been spent over the years. It's been more of that thirty-five on the higher end, so just adjusting for actuals there. For park and rec, uh, putting, again, they had the fifty-three where it's more like forty-five on based on actual split outs for the third person. Um, engineering fees, they haven't been used. Money's been budgeted, but costs haven't been allocated here. Uh, I think if there's engineering fees, if there's been like the pavilion or what have you, it's been coming out of the actual park improvement fund, not this line item. So this just hasn't been used, so it got scrubbed out. Insurance, again, with the league, uh, got that adjusted out. Repairs and maintenance, uh, twenty-twenty-two was ten grand. Through in fifteen, it was actually more somewhere at twelve-five, where it should be landing closer to that. And then for city beautification was at seventy-five, and this has changed over the years. This is one that goes up and down depending on what city beautification projects. Whether you're doing the roundabout sign or uh, there's a handful of other things that I saw over the years. But this one is enough to do the um, the pots, the pot plants, the potted plant. Whoa. Got to generate some city revenue here. Calm, calm the city down.
Does that include, are they still planning on putting garland around the light lamp posts? That, that'll come out of there too.
Yep.
Good.
That looked really nice last year.
We had a lot of good feedback on that, so I'm glad to hear they're doing.
I love it when the movie didn't do it, if you were like, where are all the nice lights? I really miss them and then.
It'll come out of there.
Well, that means people like it and appreciate. The time that our public works put in to put, you know, doing that.
ED got zeroed out because I'm going to do an EDA budget specifically to them now that they're living their own money, so their expenses should go under their own revenues. Take that out. Not that it was a lot, seventeen fifty, but. Move that to the, an EDA fund. Compost, uh, twenty-five hundred just hadn't been keeping up over the years. Why it wasn't adjusted up, I'm not sure, but. It's more closer to the four and that's just uh, with the, a slight wage increase over the years, twenty-five just didn't cut it. And this is an old budget number from what I could tell. Four grand is close to actual what's been spent in the past. And that concludes the general fund. So as you can see, even with all that revenues and expenditures balance out. On the whole thing, so we're net zero, which is where you want to be in the general fund. So then uh, what you got here is twenty-twenty-two versus twenty-twenty-three new revenues. So the revenues are up by fifty-seven and the expenses. Difference in that as well. So this one, you can see the cell math is right there. Does the same for the revenues to see what the difference is. Budget's out to zero on the general fund. All right, now we'll go on to the utility funds. These should be a bit quicker. Um, generally speaking, these got hard revamps in a lot of areas just because. There were revenues expensings that just weren't matching up at all. And I looked back and I was, took those deep dives into there to make sure, because they were really off. So I wanted to make sure what I was putting in there was more based exactly on, so pulling up those. Accounting software funds, really taking a look at what's been going in there over the years and why the changes. And especially on some of the stuff consulting with Kyle quite a bit. Because these are his operations primarily to ensure that if I was making drastic changes, I was cross-referencing with him to say. And then he would give me, yeah, yeah, we haven't used that or I don't know why that's been in there. We don't use that anymore. We made this adjustment, so we brought that in-house, things of that nature. So interest earnings get adjusted down to see what it's been closer to historically in on the water fund. On the revenue side, water use charges, uh. For two, two thousand twenty-two, we're not going to hit that. I can tell you right now, um, and the five fifteen for twenty-twenty-three, that's including a three percent. Increase to hit that five fifteen. The usage just hasn't been there to justify those kind of revenues. And um, the water connection fee and the water repair fee, this is, these are a lot of old numbers when you still had a lot of houses being built. And uh, you know, knock on wood, Coldwater Crossing, they throw up a bunch of houses and it's good to go, but based on twenty-twenty-two numbers, we're hitting more along these lines. With the construction that's been done. So I want to be in line with that, so we're not, uh, similar philosophies. Like I do with the general fund, making sure we are hitting realistic and if they build twenty houses out there next year, wonderful. We will see more of these numbers and not these numbers, but if those don't get built, then we're in line with actuals on that. So you can see that's the total revenues. It's been adjusted down quite a bit on that front. On the expense side of things, uh, debt service though has also dropped quite a bit because some bond payments have fallen off for twenty-twenty-three. So that's dropped significantly as well, which is a good thing. You can see those totals there. And how much that's dropped on that. Uh, for electric utilities, it was thirty grand, hasn't come close. I think that was thinking with the new water treatment plant, that was thirty grand was a guess number and it just. And it just never got updated for actuals. That's what I think it was. 22 is where it's been hitting on the water treatment facility and where we expect it to be for next year. Capital outlay hasn't been used since 2019, so I dropped that out entirely. There's nothing in the CIP because it was all done with.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we just did that big project and now we should be set for water for.
Quite some time. So pull that number out because it doesn't need to be in there anymore. So that's why you get that drastic drop here. Then you get down into the water department itself. This includes the third person. These other, uh, numbers, I didn't highlight them all, but these include the third person in public works as well. Hydrogen supplies just hasn't come close since 2018. We just haven't come close to spending 4,500 on that, so that's been adjusted. Telephone, we have expenses with the SCADA system, uh, that use telephone lines, uh, for internet access. So there are expenses coming into this code. There's just not, nothing's ever been budgeted to us. So we're correcting that by including money, uh, in the budget for expenses that are there. And there are legitimate expenses that just hasn't been money budgeted for it. Insurance got adjusted, same as the other ones, repairs and maintenance. Uh, there was a couple of main breaks in 19 and 20 that really spiked that number. But main breaks are kind of one-off type of deals. We've had a couple this year, but it wasn't near the expense. So six grand is about more where that ought to be. On that, uh, for miscellaneous general, uh, we've had very, we have various fees that get paid out of here. And similar to telephone, it just wasn't adjusted properly or budgeted properly, legitimate expenses. The number just wasn't where it needed to be. So adjusted to where those expenses are coming out of. So, um, your expend, expenditures largely in thanks to the debt service dropping off, uh, goes down commensurate. So overall, your revenues did go, your, your revenues, you can see went down farther than your expenditures did. So revenues went down by 162, expenses dropped by 110, and that's the difference between these two numbers here. So there's still 105 revenues over expenditures.
So even though we are anticipating an increase in water rates by 3%.
Now, you can go ahead and not do the 3% on water and I can adjust that down on the revenue end. That's.
Could, okay, because we don't, we don't set that till first meeting in January, right? Or when do we do that? I would like.
So if you're expecting 515 with a three, you just back out 3%. You put it more at 500,000.
So I don't know if we have time tonight, but I would, I would like to have a conversation about that because we did have a fee study scheduled done three years ago. It was going out five years.
That recommended 3%.
Right, so I would like to look at that because you did say that you have, you have knowledge in that to make sure that we're, do we need to increase? Do we not need to?
So the answer to that is if you don't increase it by 3%, instead of having $105,000 in revenues over expenses, you're going to be 15 less, so you're going to be 90.
That doesn't, I don't, to me, that doesn't, what does that mean?
We have less revenue.
Less revenue, but does it still cover the costs?
Yes. So you, 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 you still are revenues over expenditures of 95,000 and that's everything in the budget is included.
So.
You're just revenue.
You're still collecting 95,000 more than you're spending.
Yep.
Okay. I just, sometimes I need.
That's the phrasing that was needed? Yeah.
Sometimes I just need a little.
I tend to leave it out, the 3%.
Yeah.
I, I think we need to get a, a handle on all this again.
Yeah, I'd like to look at.
You want to, want to leave out the 3%? Just do 95? That's fine.
What we're looking for, do we think we need the 3%? Or do we not need to do the 3%? Because I think last year we did not do an increase or we did.
We did not.
We did not.
We did not.
So to do the rate study, I need more time than I've got till the end of budget. That's something I will do next.
We can leave it for now, but I, that's one, that would be a take, a takeoff.
So I will say that, so if you're looking, my recommendation would be, don't do the 3%. We don't need the revenue. You're still, instead of being at 105, you're at 90. You're still revenues.
And then we can look at for 2024 and beyond.
Yes.
Because we've already, we've completed our big water project.
Yep.
So what are the things I know, you know, do we need to look at our lift station? Those are sewer.
Those would be sewer.
But I don't know what else.
We're not anticipating any more debt service on the water side for quite a long time. So this is what we're looking at having in there.
Yeah, so I think a rate study would be really good to do on this for the next five years, just to make sure that we're still in alignment. And maybe we won't have to have any increases and maybe we can even look at adjustments to our rates.
So really.
And I'm good leaving it in for budgeting purposes. I'm fine with that for now.
Sure.
We don't, doesn't mean we have to do the 3% increase either.
Yeah, and what it would mean, what it really means is let's say, we do the rate study, I get the rate studied on next year. That looks out that five years. And then if we go, oops, we really should have done that 3%. Well, then you just, you add on another 3% on the tail end instead of on the 23 end.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to throw it out now, but sometimes these things come up when we're walking through things that I just, oh, maybe we should just do that because I think we're kind of outdated now. And we outsource that. And if you are able to do that, that would be a great benefit for us to like have a good idea of where we're going to be the next.
Yes, I can do that. I threw the 3% because the current rate study says to do it. But that's because I'm not going to have the time to really deep dive into the rate study to really pull apart like I've been able to do with the rest of these numbers.
Yeah, so we didn't do it last year, even though it said to do a 3%, but I think things have adjusted.
I don't think you have to, to be quite honest. You could, you could get away with not doing it another year.
Now, let's leave it in there for now and we'll have more conversations throughout the year.
Sure. So that's where, uh, where the water fund's at. With that, still in the good, sewer is far closer on things, but it's sitting fine. So here you've got the property taxes that you levy for, the 194 or 500. That's being levied for through taxes, but then it gets transferred into the sewer fund to make up the difference. This 555, that's with the 3% increase. And this one, I'm going to say, yes, do, because when we get to the bottom, you're going to see why. We're very, revenues and expenditures are very close to each other on the sewer fund. But, uh, and then again, with the sewer connection, reconnection fees, drop that down to 50 to realize more actual rather than hoping we get this and we don't. So that drops our revenues down by quite a bit. You can see there. And then as we get into the debt service side, there has been a nice drop off on the debt service side. And when did I say this dropped off? Is next year the final year? How about I just pull up the debt service spreadsheet? Look. So yeah, 24 is the last payment on that, and we have no debt service after that. Now that we are looking at.
Yeah.
Equipment upgrades on the wastewater end. So there will be debt service coming on. I just don't know how much, depends how much we get in P-SIG money or if we're able to get bonding dollars to help write down that cost. Looking at about 7 million is the cost. And, um, like I said, I got to know where we're at with P-SIG grant dollars and things of that nature before we get into what that debt service is going to look like going forward. There's too many variables at this point.
I mean, I know our goal was to not levy for the debts for this, but I just don't see that happening anytime soon.
With luck, we just simply levy less. And that helps with that. But that should be dropping off then and may, might be a year or two, maybe 27, 26, 27 before new debt. No. Before new debt comes on. But, uh, once we get a better idea of what that's looking like, that I will apprise you guys with amortization tables and debt service schedules and all of that. And I will figure out exactly what levy we may or may not need depending on that. But it did drop down, which is a good thing. And that helps out. Repairs and maintenance, it just hasn't been that high. There was some lift station work that had been done in 19 and 20, but my understanding is the vast majority of the lift station work has been completed. So there's not a whole lot of repairs and maintenance we have to worry about on that. So drop that down. Bio-sol's disposal, a lot of this I consulted with, uh, Eric on, just to make sure I was seeing it properly. Bio-sol is disposal, hasn't been that high since 19 and 20. And since then, um, 40 grand, based upon what we're hauling out right now, will cover exactly what we're hauling out from year to year. It just hasn't been that high before. Those professional services, that was, uh, those stopped in 2020. We stopped using these professional services and it hasn't been used in 20 and 21. That's now done in-house. So now we just get to eliminate that number completely.
That was clever.
But that's been eliminated, but it wasn't ever taken out of the budget. Same with telephone lines, those were over budgeted in this department. But there were, I think it's a later one, we add in some for telephone because it was just the wrong line item code on that. Testing lab services, repairs and maintenance and capital outlay. Those two were over budgeted once again. And then, uh, this has been adjusted for 2023 CIP numbers on that. So there was a lot of adjustments here to help offset some of this other stuff. Again, third person in there and in these numbers as well. Engineering fees, uh, those again, over budgeted in the sewer fund. And there's just a lot of this over budgeting in the sewer fund that I found. We won't come, we'll be more of that 15 as we gear up for some of these projects. This is where the telephone comes in for some of the lift stations, SCADA stuff. There's expenses in here, but there was no budget. So a lot of this telephone here went to here, to where it's, it's actually being accounted for. So we're aligning those expenses better. Insurance got adjusted and then repairs and equipment, uh, maintenance machinery, or repairs and maintenance on this. That was over budgeted at 50, 40 will easily cover it. Anything going on in there? So with that, uh, you get a decrease on that side. However, with those adjustments, you come real close on the over under, but that's okay. The sewer fund's sitting on 2.1 million dollars. But a large chunk of that is to write down that $7 million project that's coming up. We would sock in money away, so we got a bunch of that 2 billion we're going to put towards the actual project. Then we get some P-SIG money or some state bonding dollars, depending on how that's shaking out. And then the rest would be what you'd done debt service for on that. But it's still in the black, that's what matters. And we get over the storm fund and we didn't have a budget for last year for these categories. Nice part about storm is it's not a very active fund. No storm funds really are. It's pretty simple and straightforward. So you've got the storm water utility fees on the revenues, something in there for the interest earnings, late penalties. And these are based on 2022 numbers as we've been seeing them come in. There just wasn't a budget. And then you go down and the expenses are pretty straightforward. Some engineering fees for, um, the credits that we've been applying for. And hopefully I'm going to get up to speed on that, so we can get that closed out. Some repairs and maintenance and then just capital outlay. This is for cleaning out some of the culverts. And then once we start getting into more of what that CIP looks like for taking care of the ponds as we have them and what that shapes up to be.
Well, that's going to help with having.
A lot of dredging.
Just pulled out.
Right. So there we're looking at revenues over expenditures of 56, 3 on that. That's the update on the budget.
This was very helpful. I think it's one of the most years that I've actually really unders, not, I've always understood it, but like really seen it and it.
So, well, what, a little bit for next, any questions before I detract and go on another tangent? So that's how I'm looking at the 2023 budget shaping up. So typically on my budget cycles, we will start in June. So I will start putting together the general fund and a skeleton of the utility funds in June. Because I need a skeleton, idea of the skeleton of the utility funds, especially the debt service side of things, because we levy for that. And then there, there's a little bit of interplay. So I have to have at least an idea of what that's looking like. But then I start putting the general fund together. And then I present in July, just a very, it's a very rough draft, getting things put in there. But at least it gets you in front of it, in front of you, seeing what it's looking like. And then we chip at it away every month or every meeting with little updates here, little updates here is what CIP is looking like. Get that in front of you, so we're not doing this gigantic hour and a half budget update all in one go. We're chipping away at it so that it's not so much just a blast of stuff, because I've only had six weeks to throw this together. So it'll be much more digestible next year than this year. And then we have to have everything kind of in place by September, especially the general fund, because that's when we have to have our levy locked in. And I like to have that zeroed in. And then from September towards the end of the year, it's more work on the utility funds, mainly because we have the general fund in order, because we have to have the levy correct. So that's in a pretty solid state in September. But then on the utility end side of things, uh, the more months we go, because we get monthly utility revenue, the better numbers I have when budgeting. And then we get things passed in December. Good, and then it all ties together right at the end.
Perfect. Yep, that's good.
Where's the big picture at? With all your new numbers?
I'll try to get 20 at the next meeting.
Oh, I thought you had it.
Oh, big picture? What kind of big picture?
Sorry, 7, you had 47, 48%?
Oh, the percent.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where are we at on our?
Sure.
The number that really matters in our brains.
Even my head's going a little mush right now. Open. Open that one, that's the one I want to open. There we go, let's, so let's get.
I like it.
There's your overall big picture. So with the new, this is the number we, that I had plugged in at the general fund. This is the capital levy. This is debt service. So on the capital levy, uh, this, so this will be the total levy that we have. And that keeps that tax rate pretty stable when in comparison to the 2022. A little bit of a drift downward, but it keeps that tax rate stable. And that additional levy money, that's really getting, I, I plugged that entire amount for the most part into streets. Because we're looking at doing, and that, I think, uh, that had been prepped for you guys. Next year is going to be a, a large overlay project. So we put more in here because we're going to have to bond for it and that will buffer against how much we need to bond. They'll write down that amount. So we bond less, so we don't have as much in interest payments or managing that a little better.
No, it looks good. Thank you.
Anything else, any other questions? For Nick? Thank you.
You picked a great meeting, Derek. Even the meetings like you need to be at.
I finally get it, you know, after eight years.